Good evening and welcome to the Monday, June 1st, 2015 meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. Could I ask the clerk to call the roll, please?
Certainly, Honorable Mayor Sean Hyder.
Here.
Alderman Waldeck.
Here.
Alderman Beider is absent. Alderman Pandeleon?
Here.
Alderman Newman?
Here.
Alderman Tac?
Here.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Here.
Alderman Adelman?
Here.
Alderman Moreno?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a forum.
Thank you, Betty. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. First item on the agenda this evening is reports of city officers. First item under that is comments by mayor, and I have a resolution to read in appreciation for employee Sandy Ragsdale. If I may read that. Whereas Sandra G. Ragsdale has been a dedicated employee of the City of Lake Forest since June 2nd, 2003, and whereas Sandra G. Ragsdale will honorably retire from the city on June 12th, 2015, and whereas Sandra G. Ragsdale served in the following positions during her dedicated career: Program Supervisor, Dance; whereas Sandra G. Ragsdale also served in a part-time capacity as Artistic Director, of Dance and Creative Dance Instructor; and whereas Sandra G. Ragsdale in her roles has touched dancers of different skill levels with a variety of learning outcomes, from dedicated performance company members to recreational dancers to ADA students, they all learned, worked, and danced together. And whereas Sandra G. Ragsdale has loving nurtured thousands of dance lovers for life, creating a home for them to thrive within; and whereas Sandra G. Ragsdale has created a place for young dancers to learn to give back, smile, cry, and live onstage; and whereas Sandra G. Ragsdale has, with commitment and dedication, overcome great adversity by successfully bringing the dance academy back from two major split-offs by former employees; and whereas Sandra G. Ragsdale has utilized her creative talents throughout her career to add her special touch to recreation special events and lent her experience to the children's activities for the city's annual employee picnic; and whereas Sandra G. Ragsdale has brought her own special kind of magic to the Recreation Department and all that have been blessed to have participated in and worked with her. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Lake Forest, Illinois, that the council on behalf of the administration and residents of the community hereby expresses its appreciation and gratitude to Sandra G. Ragsdale for a public service faithfully performed, and be it further resolved that this resolution be appropriately inscribed and conveyed to Sandra G. Ragsdale with a copy to be included in the official minutes of the June 1, 2015 meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
移到
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. Congratulations, Sandra. You out there?
I must say this caught me a bit by surprise. Sally told me that this was going to happen, but I didn't really realize what it was. She said, "Don't forget to show up on Monday night." It has been my honor and a blessing, and I want to thank City of Lake Forest and Parks and Recreation of Lake Forest for giving me a venue to be able to make the passion of my life my career. And I want to thank Fred Jackson for believing in a little 16-year-old who came to him at the end of her junior year and said, "I'd really like to teach creative dance and modern dance for the rec center this summer." He said yes, and that was the start of my career. And here I am, having had an amazing ride. Thank you all. Thank you all so much. Kathy's daughters through the program, our wonderful tapper, Kathy Stenyek's daughter. I've had so many amazing students, not to mention Bob Kylie's gorgeous ballerina. I love them all, and I will always love them and love the opportunity to have brought some of my passion for dance and my passion for being a whole, integrated human being to the young ones of our community. Thank you.
Sandy, on behalf of the entire community, thank you for all the young lives you've touched and what you've done for Lake Forest. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, 2015-2016 Board and Commission Appointments. I have several to read off, and then I'll ask for a voice vote on the approval. Zoning Board of Appeals, Richard Ponsker, reappointment. Plan Commission, Rosemary Care, appointment, and Michael Freeman, appointment. Lloyd Culbertson and Guy Berg, reappointment. Croya, Jennifer Derberg, Alonda Hender, and Rebecca Quakenbush, the last two being reappointments. Youth Members on the Croya Board, Joey Franklin, Sophie Marasco, and Lane Mankoff. The Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, Greg Nikitas, who is an appointment, and Matt Davis, who is a reappointment and appointed as chairman. Board of Trustees, Firefighter Pension Fund, James Carey is a new appointment. Board of Trustees, Police Pension Fund, Colleen Chandler is a new appointment. I need a motion to approve the Board and Commission's appointments and reappointments, please.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. We are approved. Thank you very much. Also like to ask for approval of a resolution of appreciation for retiring members of Boards and Commissions, and there is follows. Parks and Recreation Board, Chairman Steve Hill. Croya, Susan Bichel and Vanessa Nollen. Board of Trustees of the Police Pension Board, Thompson Ford. Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, Phil Foss. And Plan Commission, John Anderson and James Karras, do I have a motion to approve the appreciation and resolution for those groups?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And that concludes my report this evening. Next item on the agenda, comments by City Manager Bob Kylie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Couple of years ago, our Economic Development Coordinator, Susan Kelsey and I had a conversation about business incubators in Lake Forest, and this was following a very large business that some of you may know, Coyote Logistics, which started here in Lake Forest but then was lured to the City of Chicago, left us. And we talked about, well, how can we start more businesses in our community? And fortunately for me, I assigned that to Susan Kelsey, and then I got out of the way. And Susan Kelsey has taken this and run this to new heights, and she's here tonight to tell you and the community about entrepreneurship in the community and how it's grown from just a really small idea into a really big, powerful program. So Susan?
Well, thank you, Mr. Kylie. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council. Obviously, this is a trend happening across Chicago and Illinois and across the country, and it's really exciting to be able to present entrepreneurship in our community tonight. The agenda is, I'm going to give you a quick update about our Business Accelerator. We've had it about three years now, a couple of quick metrics. And I also am going to introduce you to three new startup companies here in Lake Forest, followed by Rob Lumke, the Business Chair at the Lake Forest College, and what they're doing with their entrepreneurship program. And also, we have a partnership with them, between the city and the college. Following them will be Michael Edgar. He runs the Lake County Tech Hub up in Waukegan. Recently, we announced a partnership between Lake Forest and Waukegan, and really trying to grow that corridor and share resources and networking. Following Mike will be Joe DeRosa from the Lake Forest Business Department, Lake Forest High School Business Department. They just came off an exciting TEDx presentation, and he'll tell you about that. And then Elizabeth Brandell will be talking about the tremendous program that they just came off of on Thursday night. If any of you had a chance to see it, it was the pitch night at the Lake Forest High School. It was just outstanding. You need to watch the video. Okay, quick update on our Business Accelerator. For those of you who don't know, it's located over at the Grove Cultural Campus, next to the Dickinson Hall and the Senior Center and the Pottery Studio, where in our third year. Originally, our goal was to offer some co-sharing space, some, you know, low-cost share office space for startups, to kind of explore their concepts and prove their business plans. It was to create some local jobs, obviously to try to create some internships with the college and other local schools, and to really create a vibrant community and some new ideas on economic development. The goal this year was to create a community-wide mentor database, which we've done. We've got about 26 mentors. We're always looking for more mentors, but that will be housed at the Lake Forest Library and accessible to any Lake Forest resident or business. So in the past three years, we've added on 87 new businesses. Now that we've partnered with Waukegan, that'll be 120. We're excited for the rest of this year and next year. Michael will share with you some of their exciting news, but we're looking forward to strengthening that synergy. We've added on 95 new jobs. We know that businesses created locally, about 84% of them stay locally. Of those 87 businesses, 16 have moved into permanent office space in Lake Forest. We have another 18 that are still at the accelerator, and then the rest are at Regis or they're at their home offices or doing virtual offices. As I said, we have 26 mentors that are signed on, always looking for more mentors. But I think what the really exciting news is, we've had 185 internships with Lake Forest College, working here at City Hall with our local businesses and with our Business Accelerator. So now what I'd like to do is bring up one of the first of the three businesses that have started here, is Permanent Solutions Training, PST, Justin Walker. He's located up on Northwestern, across from Crystal Point Condos, and I'll let him explain his business.
Thank you, Susan. Evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. My name is Justin Walker. I'm one of the co-founders of Permanent Solutions Training. We're a company dedicated to building, reinforcing, and sustaining the foundations on which prosperous teams and individuals are built. We're all active-duty Navy SEAL SWIC operators, and we're also master training specialists at the Navy Training Center up in Great Lakes. I don't know how many of you knew that the Naval Training Center in Great Lakes was the only boot camp for the Navy, but as an instructor up there for the last three years, what we've recognized is that the students entering the training are a microcosm of what our families, school systems, and states are producing. And when the students would come in to go into Naval Special Forces training, about 80% of them would fail. And it wasn't due to a physical problem. It was due to a mental problem. They would lose their passion, they would lose their drive, they would lose their motivation, confidence, to continue training and move forward. We decided that that was a problem and that we needed to try to fix this. So we decided to create a mindset development training program that reinstills confidence, that pulls out passion, pulls out drive, and pulls out motivation in an individual. And we do this through various means. One of those first means is a self-assessment tool that helps an individual become more emotionally aware, more self-aware of themselves. And when you become more emotionally aware and become more self-aware, this gives you an opportunity to make better decisions. When you make better decisions, you're more capable of handling your family life, your life when you're social circles with your friends, and your business life just a little bit better. And when you're capable of doing that, your lifestyle can become better, and it can become more balanced, and it can also become more meaningful. Especially when you go back to the decision piece, if you take into consideration that whenever we make a decision in life, it's based off of three questions: Is it possible? Can I do it? And what's in it for me? Whenever we have someone come into our training programs, we challenge them to ask themselves a fourth question: What's in it for other people? And how can they benefit from the decision that I'm about to make? And we also take that even a step further and help to have them apply this in their family lives, in their social circles, and in their businesses. And we do this through corporate training programs. We do it through high school sports teams, college sports teams, and we also do this through traveling teams, and we also do one-on-one training here in Lake Forest. And as the picture up there, as you can see, we're also part of the Bunker Labs program that is downtown Chicago, located at 1871 at the Merchandise Mart. This was an event that we just ran last Thursday, where we ran seven different focus groups at about 30 minutes apiece, and it gave us an opportunity to give people a taste of what it is that we have to offer. And just to give you all a little bit of a taste, I wanted to give you four questions to take home with tonight. The first question, if you want to write them down on any notepad or whatever you might have, you can pull out a phone, but the four questions are: Who am I? Who do I want to be? How am I going to get there? And why? And after you take this home, I'd like you to dive into it a little bit, as much as you possibly can. When we challenge the people that come into our programs to take a step into this, we ask them to get into it mentally, physically, emotionally, spiritually, financially, familiarily, communally, and how it impacts their life in so many different ways. And again, we offer corporate programs and sports teams programs, and on an individual basis, with youth, adults, athletes, and non-athletes alike. And we also have a nonprofit organization that we've created for 11- to 14-year-olds that is in the development, and we are waiting our 5-on-1(c)(3) status at this time. And that's all I have for this evening. If anybody has any questions after this meeting, feel free to meet me in the back of the room. I have business cards for anybody that would like to ask any questions as well later on. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you, Susan.
Good evening. My name is Eli Turnvo, and I'd like to thank the City Council for the opportunity to present my new business, and I'd also like to express my gratitude for the Lake Forest Business Accelerator, and thank you to Susan Kelsey, who's given me a lot of knowledge, a lot of assistance in getting my new business launched here the next few months. In the next few months, I'll be launching the new business in Lake Forest. It will serve the community and all the surrounding communities. The idea was born from the fact that nearly 70% of deaths in the local area result in cremation as a final means of disposition. Additionally, 85% of families have no need to go to a large funeral home when many services can be planned through simply an office. My services start before a loved one dies. I will specialize in pre-planning a funeral, memorial service, or celebration of life. This enables an individual to take control and to direct how their life is celebrated and remembered. I will offer numerous educational and informational programs throughout the community to enhance the knowledge and awareness of services pertaining to before the time and after the time of death. Families today have many different ideas of how they like to celebrate their loved ones or even their own life. I specialize in helping them accomplish this goal and celebrate the best way that would honor their life. I have numerous years of experience planning traditional, contemporary celebrations, and unique events. My business will operate from a comfortable office that's nicely appointed here in town. It will have all the selections of a large funeral home, including caskets, urns, burial vaults, cemetery monuments, and grave markers. The only thing it lacks is a large visitation room, which for 85% of the family planning funeral services, aren't necessary today. Since my business is for today's families, my office is completely mobile. I can make funeral arrangements from anywhere. I'm totally equipped to go to their home, where decisions can be made in the comfort of their own and familiar surroundings, which is especially helpful for elderly family members. Funeral, memorial, and celebration of life events take place at many venues. I plan them at churches, community centers, country clubs, homes, and parks. Today, many visitations take place prior to the funeral service at the church. Therefore, the need for paying for a large funeral home and the overhead is alleviated. I look forward to working with the families in the community, and I'll be deeply honored to help celebrate the lives that they lived. I worked in Lake Forest for five years under Jim Iacabino, and after his retirement and sale of his funeral home, I knew this is the best route to continue what I learned from working under his tenure. I look forward to many more years here in Lake Forest. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, for the opportunity to speak this evening. As a quick introduction, my name is Steve Whittington, and I'm a relatively new resident in the area, Lake Bluff, as of March 2014. I'm a 20-year veteran of Procter &amp; Gamble, coming from Cincinnati, Ohio most recently. However, as you can see, I'm turned onto a little bit of a new path, and I'm here to talk to you as the founder of Life Working, a new company that I am just in the...my business cards aren't even close yet. I want to start with why. I started with what, but actually the most important piece here is why, and actually Justin got me thinking about a couple of questions back there. But the reason that Life Working exists is because of the complexity that we all manage in our lives today, no matter what you do or who you are. The promise that we have with Life Working is to strive to deliver the best and most productive marginal minute in the complexity of your lives, whether that work is for your job, whether it's your career, which we all in many cases know is your job in many companies over time, or for your community, like we're looking at today. And another piece that I wanted to share as well from a market perspective, so there's a why beside, I would say, the passion I feel, but from a market perspective, just to share, according to the Freelance Union, today around 30% of the US workforce, or 44 million people, are independents, meaning freelance contractors, moonlighters, or what are called diversified workers, which have a number of things that they do throughout the day. Forbes projects that that number will grow to 50% by the year 2020. In comparison, while there's been substantive growth in the supply, today there's around 1,800 coworking locations, and that's where I'm going to talk about the what in a second, which equates to about 88,000 seats across the United States. So roughly, today, there's about 500 independents that are competing for every one seat in the coworking space here, and the demand is heavily outstripping the supply as we look forward. So I'm going to get back to the slide now, Susan. The what? What will Life Working be? So Life Working is a network of coworking locations that provide the environment, one, as I shared, for you to get the most out of yourself from a work perspective, again, whether that's networking, homeworking, or jobworking. It's a hosted environment, so there'll be somebody when you walk in this physical facility, where you're greeted by someone who knows who you are, and again, it's an environment that will provide the amenities that truly allow you to be the most productive. And I'll bookmark amenities, I'll come back to that in a second. And it's also a community within a community like Lake Forest. So it's a place where you make connections with other members, and it's located close to where and how you live, not close to where and how you work. So let me jump to value. Why is this important? Why is it relevant that I'm talking about this today? Quite frankly, for a community like Lake Forest, one is increased revenue for local retailers. We are not a retail concern, but we will be in a retail area. We will bring foot traffic into retail areas, and we will facilitate amenities like food, laundry, and shipping services. In other words, as a member for Life Working, you come in, I'm either networking, I'm getting some heads-down work done, I'm collaborating on a dance recital that might be coming up in the community, and you bring in your laundry, you bring in your shipping, a box or something like that. And again, what we're doing behind the scenes is ensuring that those services are available to you. You don't have to go anywhere else for them, but we're working that through the community. We don't, we're not provisioning those services. That's the kind of amenity that we're talking about for Life Working. So that's the value, as we look at it, for a community in which where a Life Working Center would be, a Life Working location would be. I'll turn it a little bit more to the corporate value, and this is where I have a little bit more background. So from a corporate perspective, we believe that Life Working is, as part of a work-life effectiveness program, would be a clear, provide a clear differentiator for a couple reasons. One, recruiting top talent, and this is basically talent that wants to work for you but is not willing to commit to that daily commute. And we know that this is not only a millennial issue. That's the one that's most publicized, but we know it's not only a millennial issue. The other one is from an employee engagement perspective, in providing an alternative to the home office, as your employees are starting to see their workspace that they're using shrinking today. And again, many of us know, that's why Starbucks and Panera's are full, that while your home office is sometimes very effective, it's not all the time very effective. In many cases, it's not very effective. So and then finally, from a facility perspective, from a bottom-line perspective, is it's an additional tool in the toolbox when you're looking at the liabilities on your balance sheet, when you're considering corporate transitions, when you're expanding, when you're contracting, or when you're relocating, and that impacts where your employees come and how they work. So these are all the areas where we think, at a very high level, where Life Working will bring value. Really quickly, I want to talk about what we're currently working on today. And again, Life Working is intended to be a network. We are going to have a number of these locations in the Chicagoland area, but we want to start in Lake Forest, and we want to headquarter in Lake Forest for some natural reasons, location, and I think that it would be a wonderful location for us to start. So we're looking for space, and I've been having some conversations. Susan's been actually a great resource in helping to make some connections. So that's one area that we're looking at. The other is, as we're having conversations, we're looking for people who share our vision as advisors, as early adopters, as stakeholders, as key resources, as we are building, defining, refining, correcting, and overall just marshaling the resources for us to launch. So if you're interested in speaking any further about Life Working, you can reach me via Susan Kelsey at the Lake Forest Business Accelerator. Again, I thank you very much for the opportunity, and have a good evening.
Hi. Thanks for having me.
You too.
I'm Rob Lumke from Lake Forest College. A couple of years ago, the college created a minor in Entrepreneurship and Innovation, and by next year, it's going to be the most popular minor on the college. And I thought I'd talk to you tonight about two aspects of our program that set us apart, make us unique, and actually have allowed us to flourish, and both those are relationships with the city, thanks to Susan Kelsey in large part. I should say quickly that I'm not supposed to be here. Professor Dublin Jafki's supposed to be here. She knows a lot more about the relationships, and she works directly with Susan quite a bit. So the first part is the curriculum. So our curriculum is based in the liberal arts. We allow everybody to minor in entrepreneurship if they want. In fact, that's what we encourage. We're looking for the art history major, the music major, the theater major, the biologist, the environmental studies major. They all can do our program, and it's a wonderful thing on our small campus that we can bring so many people together into an incubator kind of situation. As part of that, the way we get through that is by having our curriculum focused largely on experiential learning. And this is where Susan and our partnership with the city is so important. As Susan mentioned before, we have internships, but in addition to internships, we have one class that has what we call the practicum, which is a one-on-one learning experience, one student, one entrepreneur in town, and they meet for about six to eight weeks and solve a particular problem. We have another class, which is what Small Business Projects up there, and that picture is actually from the Small Business Projects, another class where three or four students get together with a local business, and they work for the semester to actually solve a problem, and then they, in this room, make a presentation to the community. Our students find these experiences so beneficial. It's so much better than a Harvard case study approach. To be able to solve actual problems, to provide actual input to businesses is unbelievable. And it wouldn't happen if we weren't in Lake Forest. The North Shore is great, Susan is great, and all of our opportunities here are so much better than if we were in a rural area without these kinds of connections. The last thing I'll talk about is the Entrepreneurship Advisory Council. So we have about 12, eight to 12 members on the Advisory Council. Most live in Lake Forest, some live in Chicago or other places on the North Shore. A couple are alums, but most are not. And this Advisory Council comes to campus three or four times a year. We use them as a sounding board. They frequently give us challenges, but more than anything, it's networking. It's networking for our students. It's allowing us to come up with more internship possibilities, more small business project possibilities, more practicum experiences. We have about 60 kids who are declared minors, graduate about 24 a year or so, and so you can imagine how many different experiences we need semester after semester. And we couldn't do it if Susan didn't have such a great approach. I'll leave it at that. You can go, you can Google "Lake Forest entrepreneurship," and you'll see webpages about all the experiential learning aspects, most of which are tied to the town here, as well as the Advisory Council, which is also strongly tied to the town. So we hope it's a partnership that will go on for a long, long time. We know that our students are better for the town, and we hope that the businesses feel like our students are providing them some value as well. So thank you very much.
Hi, good evening. My name is Michael Edgar. I'm the co-founder of the Greater Waukegan Development Coalition, and our signature project right now is the Lake County Tech Hub. About a year, year and a half ago, I met with Susan as part of one of Congressman Schneider's roundtables, and we were talking about some of the different things that we're doing up in Waukegan, the things that Susan's doing down in Lake Forest. And we started dialogue about how do we create a regional partnership. Let's start thinking about an entrepreneurial region, and the nexus of what happens in North Lake County is just phenomenal. So what we've done with the Greater Waukegan Development Coalition is we are here to support the development of new business and real estate development from basically now Lake Forest up to Kenosha out to I-94. So it's a large macro area. A number of the people that we have on our board and in our organization have real estate backgrounds, they have IT backgrounds, they have business backgrounds. We host a number of networking events every month. We also have the Tech Hub program, and recently, we now are announcing that Dr. Tom Muscarello is now the Executive Director for the Tech Hub, and he brings experience running an incubator down at DePaul. So he had an entire floor of the CNA building down in Chicago. So he's bringing that to here. Over the last two years, we've helped over 30 businesses, and we've created more than 47 jobs. Some of the fun things that we've done last year was, last year, we helped open a seasonal restaurant down at the Waukegan Harbor. So if anybody's been down to the harbor, it was one of the first buildings that had been built down there in about 30 years. So we've had this new influx of talent. And what we've now been doing is moving out of the small storefront space that we've had, that we've done all our programming, and we've worked with the city of Waukegan, to take over the Waukegan Police Substation. It was a facility that had been gone dark about seven, eight years ago, and so we're now moving into that on or around August 1. So we're going from 2,000 square feet to 12,000 square feet. It's similar in construct to the Lake Forest Accelerator, but we're going to have a lot more space for labs and open hot working spaces, similar to 1871. We're going to have on the first floor is a mixed-use incubator-type environment, where people from the community can come and get technical assistance for any different types of measures of buildings, mainly thinking about arts and entertainment, people, mom and pops, that are looking for more technical assistance. On the second floor, we're expanding our Tech Walk Health Program. Tech Walk Health was a program we did last year. We had two companies come in that were graduating out of University of Chicago Booth Program. They're medical technology devices. We know that this area is prime for working in biomedical and technology. So that's one of the reasons why we brought Dr. Muscarello in. He's got a PhD in computer science. The second floor is going to be mainly focused on really those research and technology startups that are working in the medical, medical devices, and we're really excited to that. But we couldn't do this without creating a mentorship program, as well as working out with our partners with Lake Forest. So I want to thank the city of Lake Forest for allowing us to partner with you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joe DeRosa from Lake Forest High School. I teach social studies. I'm joined tonight by Laura Grigg, our school librarian, and educational technologist, and Jimmy Giuliano, another educational technologist from the high school. Together, we founded and were the program directors for TEDx Lake Forest High School in its inaugural year this year. TEDx Lake Forest High, can I just get a quick show of hands? I don't know how much audience participation we have at this kind of thing, but can you, if you know what a TED Talk is, would you mind raising your hand?
TED Talk.
Okay, good. All right. Good. For those of you that don't, a TED Talk, these are people with innovative ideas. These are people who are experts in a particular field that will give a 12, generally to 15-minute talk, usually a lecture, on whatever it is that they're experts on. They're fascinating. You can check it out online. The project was born in our classes, in the World Civ One Honors Interdisciplinary Class, along with English, to give students the opportunity to give a TED Talk based on an idea from history that they were particularly excited about, that they could be an expert on. They're informal, they're a lot of fun. And in my conversations with Jimmy and Laura, they mentioned that we could actually host a TEDx event at Lake Forest High School. This is, at this point, we're the only school on the North Shore that has a TEDx event. So we went into the planning stages. We were very, very fortunate. We communicated with a number of people from the community. We talked to the foundation, and Liz Brandell from the foundation, and the APT. We talked to the Chamber of Commerce, and we met Susan Kelsey from the Business Incubator, and they were tremendously helpful in helping us figure out how we could find sponsors and how we could make the event a reality. That was a wonderful process. We also solicited speakers from the community and asked them if they'd like to come give a TED Talk, and we ended up having seven community speakers and 12 groups of student speakers. Students could apply to give a TED Talk. We didn't know how many would. Ultimately, 35 students applied to get up on stage in front of their fellow classmates and community, onstage, in a theater, under the bright lights, and give a talk. I found this to be extraordinarily brave and really, really cool. And so, to take you through how the event went that day, Laura Grigg is going to explain the event, but first, just a big, big thank you to our sponsors. Again, the Lake Forest Foundation, the APT, the city of Lake Forest, Design Phase, Jolly Good Fellows, Sunset Foods, I know I'm going to forget some. Yeah, and Lake Forest Bank and Trust, really, really appreciate the generous support. Okay, so here's Laura with the recap of the day.
Just real briefly, the day was April 16th. It was a Thursday, and we had 25 speakers in total. There were 16 students, seven community members, as Joe stated, and two recent alumni and who came back from college just to give their talks. We had three sessions throughout the day, from 9:00 to 3:00, so it was a full day. There were, we were allowed to invite 100 guests to our inaugural event. We hope to make that larger in the future. And those were community members, students, family members, staff members. Hundreds more watched it on our live stream, and thousands more will get to watch it when the videos are fully edited and uploaded to the TEDx website, and we will be publicizing that for everyone to know when that is available. On the day, we also had about 40 student volunteers behind the scenes, doing tech, filming it, directing people, greeting people. It was just a wonderful day, and I think that quote at the bottom kind of says it. It was a very memorable experience for a lot of us, and I think if we could ask for more, we'd be asking too much. It was a great day.
Cool. Hi, I'm Jimmy Giuliano, and we just wanted to talk a little bit about like the future of it. Like Laura said, the first time you run a TEDx event, you're limited to 100 people. TED is very image-conscious, and they'd also like you to keep it small and intimate, so it's a, you can really start conversations with community members and other speakers. However, if one of your organizers attends an actual TED conference in Canada, or Sweden, or excuse me, Switzerland, I'm sorry, you are allowed to basically up your event. So we're kind of like looking at all different options now, because, you know, it's one of these things that we would hate to keep doing this and have this be a small intimate affair, almost kind of feel like very exclusive. We don't want it to feel exclusive. We want it to feel more inclusive for anyone in the community to be part of. So we're looking to hopefully expand this spring 2016 for TEDx Lake Forest High School again. In the meantime, we realized what just a positive experience it was with the students and having them share their innovative ideas. Michael Yamouche, who was one of the students of High School Hired, who won the Lake Forest Pitch Night, she was one of our TEDx speakers, and it was just a really cool experience for her. So what we're going to be doing in September is launching a TED Ed Club at Lake Forest High School, kind of start planning early, and kind of use that as a springboard, have this be a totally student-run event, to kind of celebrate new ideas, diversity, new ways of thinking, and stuff like that. And Joe's going to add one more thing about what we're going to do next year, hopefully.
Okay, so yeah, the plan is to try to find new and interesting and innovative ways to get more and more students involved, get kids to become experts. And one of the ways that every student can be an expert is in talking about their own experiences. So as part of the TED Ed Club, we'd like to find a way for students to talk not just about their ideas, but also about their experiences, and give kids another forum to express what they've gone through, some of the obstacles perhaps that they've overcome, and the way that they can connect with community. So to try to take this from innovation to also experience. Yeah. And thank you very much for having us tonight. We really, really appreciate it.
Hello, I'm Liz Brandell, and I'm the chairperson of the Lake Forest High School Foundation. And last Thursday night, as someone mentioned, we had pitch night at the high school, where we had a couple hundred community members watch four of our student groups from our Business Incubator. And High School Hired won $16,500 of funding to launch their business next year as seniors in high school. The Business Incubator is a partnership between the foundation and the high school administration, and it started, this was our inaugural year, and we had, I think, well, instead of me standing here explaining, I think the easiest is us just to show you a video that explains the program.
Business incubator class is for entrepreneurs. It's all based on creating, developing, validating, and implementing a product, and if they're lucky enough, they can have a sustainable product.
The Business Incubator course is an exciting course. It's a business course on its own. Kids are involved with engaging activities. There's exciting curriculum, but I think we're more excited about the fact what this represents for reimagining teaching and learning. Bringing in an expert teacher, bringing in mentors, partnering with a great foundation, it really shows kids what's possible. It gives kids this idea of what we call a sense of agency, that you can go out in the world and do great things.
This class brings in people from the outside world. Usually in a class, it's just one teacher kind of teaching you a rubric, but this one, it brings in different mentors from professionals in the field, learning about marketing, learning about advertising, things like that. Every other week, there's two or three different mentors, or two or three different teachers that just help me learn a lot more.
The way students learn is completely different. It's no longer a classroom with a bunch of chairs where they sit bored and take notes. It's a real-life application. Now they're asking, can I just go call a corporation and figure this out?
That would be a little more, you know, easier.
No one really gets to do this. You're starting a legitimate business, learning about real-world applications to things, learning about the business world that most people are going to need to know in the future, which is something that I think no other class really has.
I think that's the great value. And so if we're living in a knowledge economy now, and so these ideas of creativity, critical thinking, communication, those are the things that are truly valued, I think we're really positioning our kids for a high degree of success.
It's not about feeling Scantrons out. It's not about any of that. It's about learning how to work in a team. It's about learning how to juggle responsibilities. It's learning how to take initiative. It's learning how to use your brain in a different way.
I've learned to make connections with people and really present myself to successful people, and work with professionals, which I think will be really important when I go into the workforce.
Probably asking yourself, how can you not be?
I am a big people person, so I love communicating with people and building relationships, and this class does that for me, not only improving my skills, but also improving my company, my business. The biggest reason I like this is because I get to go out into the real world and experience things that in a regular classroom I wouldn't be able to experience otherwise.
Did you see that? Yeah. Okay.
See, you possibly.
I think this is a much more fluid way of learning. You have all these experts from the community that are coming in that are talking to the students, and then they have to decide how that's going to affect their products. I think that's a more inspiring way of learning.
Their level of initiative is completely different. They're willing to go after things instead of waiting for someone to tell them how to go after something. That kind of drive and ambition is completely different. This is forcing them to have to think in ways they've never thought before.
I think in the Innovation Incubator, what's much more exciting is kids are involved in these relevant, highly engaging activities, things that they're inspired about, things that they're passionate about, and they go through what's called an iterative process. So there isn't no one right or wrong answer on any given day. It's an idea of continuous growth. Kids are working with those teachers, working with those mentors to figure out how can we make this better. Our school's mission speaks to the idea of developing young men and women who have both the willingness and the capacity to change their world. I can't tell you how proud we are of our students, our teachers, our parents, our community partners for helping us live this value.
I would like to thank the community that helped us, helped sponsor us for Pitch Night. BMO Private Bank, the Stericycle, Inc., Follett Corporation, Web Financial Group, The Business Accelerator, and Berkshire Hathaway all contributed to the foundation to help us put the event on, and it was a terrific evening. And if you weren't able to attend, we should have a video in a couple weeks that will show the evening, and if not, join us next year for our second annual Pitch Night. Thank you. Wow. Okay. You've seen a lot of examples of entrepreneurship in the community. So at this time, we're happy to answer any questions, or feel free to reach out to any of the people after the meeting.
Any questions for Susan? I just have a comment. You know, Susan, every time you're either before the council or you and I have a chance to talk, I'm amazed at your capacity to grow what you've been working on. And the community is so great and grateful to you for what you do. It seems like whenever there's something to be done and an idea to kind of, to grow and to germinate and to become a reality, Susan Kelsey seems to be behind it. And so on behalf of the community, thank you for your great work you're doing, some great stories. We're very proud of, and we look forward to hearing more as you continue on. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Susan, to pick up on the theme of growing, do you want to make a plug for the farmer's market while you're here?
There we go.
All right, so our farmer's market now called the Open Air Market, so we can represent more vendors at the market, begins Saturday, June 20th. So that's just in a couple of Saturdays. We've got the most vendors we've ever had, about 28, 29 vendors, some hot breakfasts, so come on down and see us.
Thank you very much.
Is it going to be in the same location?
Yes.
Okay. In the new parking lot.
The new parking lot. Well, that was part of the question.
The second item I have on the agenda is one that has been before the community for some time. And this morning, I had an opportunity to go down to Forest Park to look around before tonight, make sure, you know, the workers were still working and getting all the plants in and so forth. And you know, as I was walking around, it sort of dawned on me that this project really epitomizes who we are as a community, and really a reflection of our values and our traditions in the community. Because when you think back seven years ago, when we started this journey, that from the very start, when the Lake Forest Garden Club initiated the creation of the concept plan and made the donation to the city council, through all the public hearings and passionate testimony and debate that took place during those years, but I think even more importantly, during the implementation phase, every detail, every consideration was taken into account that really focused on the cornerstones of family and education and traditions and philanthropy. And I think that's reflected in what you see when you go down to Forest Park right now. You know, having been involved in the early stages when we had our first conversations with members of the garden club, you know, what really prompted that conversation was an experience I, like many others, have had, that when you drove down to Forest Park and you reached Deer Path and Lake, you couldn't even see the lake. And so people didn't have the effect or the impact that our proximity to Lake Michigan would have, really sort of reinforcing who we are as a community, Lake Forest. If you drive down there now, it's a wow moment when you hit that same intersection. And I think we have a lot to be thankful for in terms of the people that participated in the process and stepped up and really put a tremendous effort behind seven years of blood, sweat, and tears to make that happen. And this evening, we have a couple of members of the Forest Park Project Board who are here to make a pitch about the grand reopening of Forest Park that will be occurring on Sunday, June 14th. So I don't know, Cliff, are you and Peter, or there's a whole group of you here, I'm not sure who is going to speak.
Ross.
Good evening. I'm Ralph Chiswaldo. I'm the president of the Forest Park Project Board, and I want to thank the mayor and city council for allowing us to come before you tonight and give you our final update on the park. As I sit here tonight and listen to some of the speakers, they were fascinating, but it stirred some memories to me. I mean, five years ago, when our board was started, I definitely knew who I was. And if you could just give me just a few moments at the end, I'm going to tell you how we did it, and why it all came about. So I'd like to start out by introducing Peter Cherry, our finance chair. Peter probably wears four or five different hats for us, project manager, finance chair, he's my psychologist when we run into difficulty, but he has been outstanding in an extreme amount of help. So Peter, he's going to give us a financial update.
Thank you, thank you very much. Susan, is this what I need?
Yes.
I did it wrong. Here we go. Good evening, Peter Cherry, I've been here before a couple of times, and before Parks and Rec and HPC. This may be my last, we'll see. Not because I hope so, but in any event, just to review a little bit of the bidding and where we've been, it has been a long project, and the scope of the project, of course, had really two pieces to it. One was the first phase, infrastructure project, sometimes called as a site development project. The second phase was the demonstration project, which had to do with all the landscaping which has been going on. Very briefly, the first phase, the infrastructure project, was truly a joint project between the city of Lake Forest and the project board, because the infrastructure is the city's infrastructure. The city contributed $800,000 to that, and we contributed $200,000 for certain features that we wanted, we felt should be put into the program, or put into the infrastructure at that time. As you can see up here, the total that we have put in between, excuse me, I should stop then, the master plan implementation, the second phase, is what has been going on now for the last year and a half. This has entailed extensive regrading that has gone on. We've cleared off vistas, so that you can see Lake Michigan where you couldn't see it before, paths have been, terraces have been built, drinking fountains have been put in, dog drinking, dog bowls have been put in by both the drinking fountains. That was an afterthought, that came at some expense, but I think it also engendered a couple of donations, as I might add from that. We've also, you'll hear more about this from Cliff in a moment, about all the invasive species that have been removed, and all the new planting that's been put in. Nearly, these numbers stagger me every time I listen to them, but nearly 500 trees have been planted, nearly 2,500 shrubs and bushes and woodies have been planted, and 80,000 grass plugs have been planted, or will be tomorrow, right Cliff? It's been quite a remarkable undertaking for us. Where has it come from? Well, contributions to date have totaled 3.5 million, actually, that number was 3,501 when I did this slide, it's about 3,515 right now. And as a matter of fact, that 369 up there, our number of donors is about 378. It's a moving target, as you can imagine. Very exciting. That's cash, that's pledges, and that's in-kind donations. And we've had some very substantial in-kind donations from vendors who do work in and around the city in names that you would recognize. Staggering to me, too, is that the donations range from a minimum of $25 to one of $250,000. Quite an astounding achievement in range. And 23 of those donors have been at the legacy circle level, as we call it, of $100,000 or more. In addition to these numbers, this only counts the money that was, that we've raised towards the project, that's been donated towards the project since it was approved by the city council. But before the final approval of the master plan by the city council, $200,000 had been donated, starting with the garden club's basic contribution, and other contributions, friends during the approval process with the city. So it's a very substantial number. Before I turn it over to Cliff, there's one thing I'd like to do, it's kind of fun, it's in the spirit of what Bob said a moment ago. This comes to me compliments of Gail Hodges, who's no stranger to anybody here, past president of the Lake Forest Preservation Foundation. She found that on June 15th, 1896, I'll do the math for you, that's two weeks short of 119 years ago, the city council had a meeting. And at that meeting, that happened, the meeting in which they approved, or directed, I guess I should say, that a ring road, or that the road be put into the O.C. Simons Platte at Forest Park, which was the beginning of this whole thing. Turns out that buried in the minutes of that meeting, there was another ordinance that was passed. An ordinance concerning public parks, appointing a park commission, and determining their duties. Now you read it, it goes on for several pages of handwritten, I might add, but beforeword processors. And there are a lot of quaint things in there, not the least of which being authorizing $350 from the general funds to be used to hire a policeman, and to be put towards other good uses for the park. But importantly, there was, in section four, and this is the important part, "Said park commissioners are hereby authorized and empowered to solicit subscriptions and donations from private parties of money, trees, shrubs, labor, or material to be used in the improvement and beautifying of said parks and public grounds in the city of Lake Forest." Old habits tie hard, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter, council members, mayor. My pleasure to be here. Like Peter, I've been here many times, it's kind of nice to be at the tail end of this, that 80,000 kind of reverberates in my head. Never in my life did I think I'd be involved laying out that number of plants. But I have to say, through the whole process, it's been just a great opportunity to... Sorry, Susan? I'm in need. Oh, okay, thank you.
Hey Cliff, before you get too far in, do you want to just talk about your background and what your role has been?
Sure.
Because you wear many hats in this process, so.
Well, I'm a landscape architect, been active here for 30 years, working in the Lake Forest area. We primarily, originally started out our business working with natural areas and the management of open spaces. Since have primarily moved into working with residents in landscape architectural issues. We work for other communities and park districts and such. But insofar as the park, I was originally brought on at the request after this presentation being made, as part of what Ralph, Peter, and everyone here in this room is, and that was as members of the Forest Park Project Board. I was originally chair of the Landscape and Horticultural Committee, which now Craig Bergman is chair of. I left that so that I could work with the Stimson and Associates team to help them in the final stages of design. I then left that to come back and represent the board in working through the various elements in regards to the public meetings and all that was necessary to get us to the point of beginning construction. I then kind of went back to a different position and represented Stimson and Associates, and still do, in the interpretation of what's on paper to the reality of what's on the land. And that's where that 80,000 comes into play. So I, as you've pointed out, Bob, I've worn a lot of different hats. Currently, right now, it's just about getting all the loose ends wrapped up, the final decisions made, and, you know, this is a very fluid process, the, you know, the park and how we're dealing with it, and all of the elements as they come through, you know, they've all been fluid and dynamic, and we have to react to the site as a whole. And I think the park is far more better for that. And that's what my point, Peter, and others, Craig, that were on the ground and saw this, and it's a common situation when your primary designers are in another state. So they were active in this whole thing, but I became their eyes and ears, and also was working with the board to protect their interests, and ultimately that of the city as well. So it's been quite an experience, and I think if you go out there, you'll see that it was worth it, certainly for me. I think it's a fantastic program, and I think we've got a park that most people, when I stood up in those meetings, and all of you saw a lot of that, and it wasn't necessarily positive. But if I stand out there today, I really can look back to those conversations, and I can see, and I think a lot of you will be able to see, what the original intent was on that property. And we're lucky to have it to the point we do now, we're lucky because of people like Ralph and the board, people like yourselves, and everybody who, you know, sort of put the hard hats on and kept moving forward. Eventually, it became me with the hard hat, making it go into the ground, but that's still happening, you're welcome out there anytime. First thing we wanted to do is rehabilitate the park. This has always been a primary goal, for those of you that have been around for many years. I'm kind of amazed at how many people never have seen the park, or just driven by the park. But part of that was the problem. It wasn't really that inviting. You had a ring road, people would blow through it, and that would be the end of it. But there's so much more there, so much more there, so much that was hidden, assets that were not utilized. So right away off the top, and primary to the city's involvement, was addressing the infrastructure needs, redefining the south parking lot, there are two different parking lots, actually, three different parking areas that are in the upper part of Forest Park where we've been working. One was already removed, one was temporarily adjusted and never changed, the other one in the middle of the park was, was part of the rebuilding of the park below for overflow. Well, they all stayed, and they all were just kind of let to go, and the roads were broken, all kinds of issues regarding infrastructure. The lighting was outdated, the storm sewers no longer worked, pavement was broken up, and parking lot was one we'd never let someone else build, just a big sheet of asphalt. So we also had drainage issues, a lot of standing water that was weakening the road, creating problems. We have had slippage of the bluff, it is a weeping bluff, which is a type of bluff that oozes, for lack of a better word, and continues to ooze. And rehabilitate, which is my main interest in this. But just to move on, you can see the parking lot as it existed before we started, it's a very large sheet of asphalt, because that's what it needed to be at that time. This was expanded and repaved and built to accommodate the boats and everybody else who used to park south, when they picked up the south parking lot and put the 2 million gallon storm sewer water tank in. So they had to have a place to park, this was built, just a big sheet of blacktop. Here you can see Spring Lane, looking east, you can see the tire track on the left from running through the mud on the side of the road where the pavement had broken away, you can see the standing water on the right, the gravel. Picture actually makes it look better than it was. Here you can see a primary problem that we have with the site. You can see where the path comes across the Belvedere, from Deer Path, and it doesn't line up with the Belvedere. So we have one of the oddest crosshatched crosswalks in town here, where you basically are going sideways down the road. Again, on the left, you can see the water, you can see the broken pavement under Stephen. And here's what we have today. This is part you're looking at here, I'm at the north Belvedere, looking south, we're looking across the base of the new road going in with the granite cobble edging, we see the pathways, we see the lighting. The lighting was updated and changed and located in sites that were a little bit more practical than they were originally. You can see the parking lot has been altered, we now have an area for drop-off for kids, we have benches, drinking fountains, we have a center swale I'll get into, you're looking at just half of the lot, it's broken now by a central drainage swale that I will touch on later. Speaking of drainage, as you know and may have mentioned, we, the project was able to be, was, actually was awarded project, you know, Development of the Year by the Stormwater Commission in Lake County for the progressive use of storm water. And I think this is one of the most important parts of the park, is that we have this educational component. This may be done on a larger scale here in the park, but just about everything in it, you can utilize at your own home, and that's the educational piece. Here you can see in the background, what's been created is an oak flat wood, that's a temporary vernal pond, that's where all the water from the southern end of the park, including the roads and the road sewers empties into that small depression. There, the hydrocarbons and things that are coming off the roads settle out, it then travels as a wide sheet of water through these whole woods, it eventually comes out of the woods, enters a pipe going under the driveway, where it then runs the whole length of the parking lot before it finally settles in and goes through the storm water, into our normal storm water system. So we are doing several things with storm water, which are today considered to be proper for ecological management of water, and one is to slow it, the other is to filter it, and the other is to store it. Our storages on site are vernal, they're temporary and ephemeral, but they are effective. By the time the water enters the city storm water system, which in this case is basically the ravine right below it, is in much better condition than when it enters the system. Here you can see, when we talk about the reconstruction and renovation of the forest, this area was grass and woodchips, and you can see here where we've added tree shrubs, you can see a new herbaceous layer growing, that's been seeded to over 70 different varieties of grasses and flowers. And then we move into enhancement, create unique vistas, improve safety for pedestrians, very big element of the park was improving the safety, and quite frankly, the areas to be used by pedestrians, upgrade the amenities, and again, encourage education of our natural areas. This is the way you used to pull up to Deer Path, Bob, you pointed this out, this was the old approach, you can see the bus, the people parked there, signage, the little garden, typical sort of token we have around the signs in town. Here's that view today, much more progressive, you are immediately married to the lake, you have the forest to the north and south. This is the type of view that we, you know, always had, this is like the view was in 1900. The bluff was not forested, it was more meadow at that time. So while not denuding the forest, we did open up these vistas and create situations that were more in keeping with the original plans, and also what our residents desire today. Here you can see the addition of the pathway between the bluff and the road, the road was moved slightly west, in some cases to accommodate this path, but here you can see, instead of being in the middle of traffic, we have two people walking their dog down the new pathways. Here you can see, again, this series of pathways, this is north between the Lower Beach Access Road on the north end, and the north exit of the ring road, you can see the pathways. And again, where you were looking now, used to be just grass, there were no trees in the immediate foreground, but all that has been planted with, as was mentioned earlier by Peter, thousands of tree shrubs and other little plants. Here's what the top used to look like, you can see the amenities, couple of different bike racks sort of tossed on the grass, garbage can and a sign. The picnic area was basically tree, you know, these tables scattered around a grassy opening. Interestingly enough, this opening turned out to be what was the flat wood, or the original place water was stored on the site, and when we were building this, we discovered that there was 18 inches of fill on top of the original soil grade. And even more interesting, when we lifted that fill, I found this big area of charred embers that had been buried, and I thought for sure we had some sort of ancient civilization that we'd found, and you know, everybody's like, don't say a word, or say everything. And then this older gentleman comes up to me one day when I was talking to someone about it, and he says, well, you know, the Boy Scouts used to camp there in the 40s. So that kind of burst my bubble, but it was kind of interesting to see the life of this. Now, we knew by the existing vegetation that this area had been something else, we just didn't realize what, until we got farther along. Here's the Belvedere area, as you can see, this is one of the benches, this one actually has the drinking fountain, you can see it has the two levels of drinking fountain, and it also has, as you can see on the lower side, a dog bowl for water for the dogs that are out on their walks. Lot of people walking dogs in this park, lot of dogs, obviously, in Lake Forest. And then the benches, a drop-off area for people to drop off their kids without being in the middle of the road. It's not for parking, but it assists in letting people get in and out. You saw the buses, you saw the parked cars, that area can just be clogged with kids. And one of our concerns was to create a safer environment by providing pull-off, seating, clean, direct pathways. And speaking of amenities, you can see the redone lighting, these bollards that lined the path, it's now there instead of the pavement. They're very low light, you can just see them glowing, they're an LED system in the foreground, is the parking for the bicycles, you can see no longer the racks, but these pedestals that accommodate several bikes. I am standing pretty much at the point where the picture with the double bike racks were, and you can just see, not the bike racks in the foreground of the previous picture, but what you can see is just, if you look at this view, and you look at all the scrub on the bluff and the debris around you, and then you look at this view, I mean, that just exemplifies the changes that have occurred at this park. It's night and day, it's a wonderful situation, and a beautiful treatment. When we talk about education, here again is that settling pond, or as we call it, the vernal pool, that's in the oak flat wood. This, by the way, is probably the rarest ecological system in Lake Forest. Almost 100% of these were wiped out, and they used to be very common, east of Green Bay Road throughout town, there were hundreds of these little pools, and they were, and they were relied upon for the breeding of several types of small animals, amphibians, chorus frogs, salamanders, toads, all kinds of things, that no longer live on the east side because we've lost all of these. So one of the edge of... vernal pool that's in the oak flat wood. This, by the way, is probably the rarest ecological system in Lake Forest. Almost 100% of these were wiped out and they used to be very common east of Green Bay Road throughout town. There were hundreds of these little pools and they were, and, and they were relied upon for the breeding of several types of small animals, amphibians, chorus frogs, sail manners, toads, all kinds of things that no longer live on the east side because we've lost all of these. So one of the educational components, besides doing progressive storm water management, was to work with kids and school kids with the reintroduction of some of these little critters. And the kids just love this. I mean, there's nothing better than throwing sail manners around and transporting from one pond to another for the kids. This happens to be a western chorus frog, long since gone from east Lake Forest and now being reintroduced to breed. Preserve, protect the view sheds, protect the stately trees, the open spaces, promote the stewardship, respect for the land, create low maintenance practices, fund the maintenance endowment. Peter touched on that earlier. And lastly, and probably most importantly, honor the work of those before us and respect the park as a place that represents the heart and soul of the community. And again, I think this is, you can see here, here's one of the vistas before. This was actually the best view of the lake before we started. Here's that view today. Big difference. Here's the benches. There's your stately trees, your open spaces combined with the vistas. I think the interaction of all these various elements, and there are several. There's four different kinds of forest types in this upper section alone. But look at the unification the lake provides, the lawn provides, the trees provide. And we went way out of our way to make sure that that stayed a major component. And quite frankly, the park had lost focus. And today I think we've brought that back into focus. I think we've done something through the residents in this town that have assisted with the Forest Park Project Board with Stimson, with the HORT committees, with, with our work, have really taken that, that underdeveloped or underutilized and underappreciated really asset that Forest Park represents. This was lawn, now it's being planted to reforestation. So for the first time in the 100-plus years that Peter mentioned, the forest is expanding in Forest Park, not contracting. And I think that, that, that goes to show the residents and their connection to the natural resources that are such a part of our history and us as residents. Again, the view of the lake is primary to Forest Park. That's why Simon's put in that Carriage Road. That's why we go there today. And by reopening it, you could not see this before. You could not see the lake from any, from this point at all. And all of the plants that were removed on that lake, on the bluff out there, all but one was a non-native invasive plant, other than dying ash and things like that. So we were able to do this merely by following good management practices for vegetative management of the bluff. You're all invited, Sunday, June 14th. Ralph, I think I'm going to hand it back to you for this.
Thank you, thank you. Forest Park's a perfect example of what a private-public partnership should be. A coming together of all parties to transform a historical park for the next 100 years. We talked about something that happened 114 years ago. We're setting up something that's for the next 100 years moving forward. How we got there, I'm extremely thankful and grateful for city council and the mayor's support, and especially for Bob Kiley and his staff. You've been exceptional to work with and your support has been outstanding. I'm extremely thankful and grateful for the support and the generosity of all of our donors from the city of Lake Forest. It's been absolutely extraordinary, the support that we've gotten, the generosity we've got from people all around Lake Forest and Lake Bluff supporting the project. I'm also extremely grateful and thankful for the board. I'm almost humbled standing up here and receiving accolades at times about, you know, the effort that I've put in. The board has been exceptional. And I could spend all night and that's the last thing you want me to do is talking about the individual members of the board, and a number of them are here today of our executive board. But there's a few people that I'd be remiss if, if I, if I didn't mention. Karen Stensruud, our PR and marketing. I think Karen early on told me that this is a temporary position and we're five years later and she's still doing it. Mary Hoffman, you know, her leadership in fundraising. You talk about the dollars that have been raised, it's just been, you know, exceptional. Two women that got involved early on, and you know, they say behind every successful man is, is definitely a woman. And in this case, I've got a lot of them behind me. And, and, and I'd like to just mention Jane, Jane O'Neil and Joan Dupuy. I mean, they called me five years ago and said, would, would you chair this or be the president of this committee? And I said, well, if it's not a lot of work on... She's, don't worry, we'll do all the work. We just need you to chair this committee and run a few meetings. Here's five years later and I'm still sitting in front of meetings. But I have to tell you, their effort has been tireless, absolutely tireless, and from day one through this project. And they're the vice presidents of this, but really they're the heroes. The people that I talk about in the executive boards have absolutely been heroes in this process and have put tireless effort in raising the funds and, and being committed. I mean, they're out there chasing cliff around at night about move this bush here, move that bush there. But the executive board has been absolutely outstanding. So I, I would say to you that, that make sure that the thanks goes to that executive board, make sure it goes to our donors and make sure, you've got a great city staff here. They've been exceptional. June 14th's a big day. If you don't have plans, we expect you to be there. If you have plans, cancel them. It, it's going to be a great day. I mean, we've got ice cream, hot dogs, refreshments, we've got a band, and we've got a lot of celebrities coming there too. It's our, we have somebody from the Chicago Bears that's going to be one of our guest speakers. The mayor's going to speak and I'm really looking forward to that.
Stick with the Bears, Ralph.
Bill Curtis is going to be out there as, as our host and MC, so you won't have to listen to me very long. But I, I think it's going to be a great day. And if you haven't been to the park, take that opportunity to come out to the park. It, it is really, it's an amazing feat that what's happened out there. And it was such a treasure for Lake Forest, but now I think we've added a lot of value to it. So thank you once again. I'm thankful and grateful for coming in front and having the opportunity to talk about something that's near and dear to our executive board and I know every member here, Forest Park. So thank you very much.
Ralph, thank you. I can tell you that it's been, one of the great joys of my two and a half years of being mayor has been working with you and your group. You, you said it earlier that when you started, you knew what you wanted to do, but you weren't sure how you were going to get there. And every time I spent time with you and any one of your team, I always saw, saw that passion, that commitment, that knowledge that maybe we weren't sure how we were going to get there, but we were absolutely positive we were going to get there. And congratulations because you did. And it's an extraordinary place and this community is very, very grateful to each of you that have participated. It's my pleasure now to ask for the council to approve a resolution authorizing the acceptance of the Forest Park demonstration projects work to the city of Lake Forest. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Would you roll call vote, please, Biddy?
Certainly. Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Pannelyon.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you and congratulations again. And I also, it is my great joy to, even though again, Ralph, you and your board want to stay out of the limelight, we're going to recognize you one more time. And I'd like to read a proclamation if I could. Whereas Forest Park is scheduled for its grand opening on Sunday, June 14th, 2015. And whereas the Forest Park Project Board has volunteered tirelessly over the past seven years, conceptualizing, leading community efforts in support of and fundraising for this rehabilitation project. And whereas the esteemed residents and volunteers of the Forest Park Project Board, the many donors to the project, and the executive board members listed below are gratefully acknowledged by the citizens of Lake Forest, and I'd like to read them. Pamela Bailey, Prue Beidler, Craig Berman, Judy Bogus, Peter Cherry, Joan Duprey, Ralph Casualdo, Gail Hodges, Mary Hoffman, P. Clifford Miller, Jane O'Neil, Karen Stensruud, and Tom Swarthout. Therefore, hereby proclaim that Sunday, June 14th, 2015 shall be observed as a holiday in the city of Lake Forest. Our people shall extend their gratitude to the board and are urged to forsake their ordinary pursuits and gather at Forest Park in a spirit of camaraderie ship and goodwill in support of the ideals of Lake Forest as a significant undertaking absolutely bears testimony to the city's four cornerstones of family, education, tradition, and philanthropy. Would you come up and I can present this to you? Congratulations.
The council will ask the council to stand.
There goes Michelle Moreno.
We're a member of charge for that.
Just raise your hand.
I'm ready.
Did everybody hear?
Everyone smile, one, two, three.
Thank you all.
That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Bob, very much. Next item on the agenda, comments by council members. Number one, Public Works Committee, request approval of design services for a replacement membrane system at the water treatment plant presented by Catherine Waldeck, chairman of the Public Works Committee, and Dan Martin, superintendent of Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to keep my comments fairly brief. That's a, that's a tough act to follow. But as most of you know, for the past year, the Public Works Committee has been evaluating options for membrane retrofitting and replacement. And the Public Works Committee now is recommending that we move forward with a phase two design for membrane system replacement. I also want to note that we are, as part of our due diligence in our examination of this issue, that we are also examining, moving forward and examining other options as well. The Public Works Committee met on May 18th, and at that time, we did discuss alternatives to replacement or retrofitting our membrane system. And those alternatives really grew out of the city council budget meeting, the finance committee budget meeting that we held in, in March. And we looked at a variety of options. We looked at purchasing 100% of our water from one of our neighbors. And we quickly had to rule that option out because we discovered, when we spoke to our neighbors, by neighbors I mean Highland Park and, and Jawa, Lake Bluff, they informed us that they were not interested or able to sell us 100% to fulfill those, those needs. So that was, that was, was not an option. And we also looked at total privatization or selling our plant. And we ruled that out as an option as well, for a variety of reasons. There was a study that we did back in 2011 and where we really gave a thorough examination and thoroughly considered this, this issue and, and ruled it out. And we also just didn't feel that this was a viable option from a standpoint of giving up control of this major asset that we, that we, that we have. Two ideas did come forward out of our discussions in our, our May meeting as possibilities that we want to continue to consider again as part of our due diligence moving forward. And one of those possibilities was some sort of a, a public-private partnership. So we're going to continue to, to, to look into that a little more thoroughly and explore that option. And the second possibility that we discussed was purchasing water from our neighbors during peak periods. So, so during those, those days of year, of, of the year, when our demand is at the highest, we, we talked about the, the possibility of during those peak, peak periods shaving some of our, our water off of, from our neighbors. And there's a lot that's involved in that. There's capital costs, there's the potential of future capital costs that we would have to contribute to, should those become necessary. There's the issue of what rate they would charge us. But we thought it was, it, it merited further discussion. So where we're at right now and what we're recommending today is we're asking to move forward with the phase two engineering. And that really allows us to keep on track here, to keep to our timeline. And it in no way precludes us from examining these other alternatives that we think are, are at least possibilities, at least merit looking into. So what we're asking city council's approval to, to do right now is to approve the phase two engineering. And we are looking forward to an August city council meeting. And at that time, we will be further discussing these two other alternatives that are, that I mentioned, and also discuss at that time, the, the membrane system capacity. So that's, we've also talked about the possibility of setting up a special workshop sometime before August, some sort of a special session, a special public works committee session that would be open to all city council members and all city council, council members could attend, so we could further explore all possibilities and, and get on track moving forward.
Questions for Kathy, Mike?
Yeah. So this is phase two. Could you just refresh my memory? What was phase one? How much did we spend on it? Question two is the 107,500 now for phase two. Does that come out of the 545 budget? Or is it in, in addition to? And number three is, how many more phases are we going to have?
I'm going to turn that over to Dan.
Okay. Yeah. The 107 this evening that you're approving is the, the first stage. The total amount would be the 546 that's already put into the budget for the FY '16 year. So this first procurement stage would take us into going out to bid in the fall and back in January, we'll be coming back with recommendations to select one of the candidates. And then that final, then the engineer will work with that selected vendor and move forward with the final phase of design and piloting. And that's all included in the 546. So it's a portion, this 107 is a portion of the 546.
And how much have we spent to date though, Dan, in the first phase one?
Phase one was the study part of it, which was the 100 and, I believe, I'm sorry?
124.
124, because we just, we just upped that from the, for the task number six to do these alternate neighborhoods. So 146,000 to date was phase one to study to get us to this point.
And then there'll be a third phase that'll absorb the rest of the 545 in the budget?
That will be part of phase, that would be the second stage of phase two for the 546 this year. Then we'll have the, we'll move into the construction phase after that. It will be phase three.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions, Tim?
Just a question for Alderman Waldeck. You mentioned public-private partnership opportunities. That's a fairly broad term. Could you just give us a possible example of what that might be?
I could, but I'm going to, I'm actually going to turn that over to Alderman Moreno. This was sort of her baby and...
Let me redirect that question.
Yeah. Yeah. This was really something that Alderman Moreno has, has been, has been thinking about for a while. And she approached me and Mike Thomas about it, I would say, a few weeks before our, our May meeting. And we discussed it a little bit. We, we really discussed privatization, complete privatization at our May meeting, and then decided that that was really not an option for us, but there might be something else out there. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Michelle.
We're in the, what I would call the investigative stage at this point, so the brainstorming stage. My anticipation is that we will look at both cost reducing as well as revenue enhancing partnerships. So kind of breaking it into those two buckets. We believe that, or I should say, I believe that the water plant is run extr-... stage. My anticipation is that we will look at both cost-reducing as well as revenue-enhancing partnerships, so kind of breaking it into those two buckets. We believe that, or I should say, I believe that the water plant is run extremely efficiently. So I don't anticipate we're going to see the kind of big cost-reduction opportunities that a partnership might bring, however. Through my profession, I've become aware of algae demand, and we have algae surplus which we discard. So as a very small revenue-creating opportunity, maybe somebody would like to buy our unusable product, byproduct of our water system. I don't know if it's feasible or not, but that would be an example of selling something that, to us, has no value in even a cost, and turning that cost into a revenue. There could be other ideas that come out of this. I don't expect it to be a grand change from what we're doing today, but there may be these incremental opportunities for either cost reduction or revenue enhancement.
Thank you.
Can I follow up on that? Because you're touching on some things that, as I went through reading the materials for tonight, I actually went back and looked at the presentation that you guys had in your meeting from, I guess it was Strand, about the different options and the different things to look at. And it was all very much from the standpoint of water operations, which is nice, and it's really important, and that's the ultimate output. There was nothing that I would consider economic. And that has to do with, you know, how do we get the optimal pricing model? I mean, we've been working on this as a group, but none of us are experts in this area. You know, yeah, it appears that the water plants run very efficiently, but, you know, how do you optimize the operations? Is there an optimal sort of economic model we ought to be following that we're not, because we just didn't think of it, because this isn't what we do for a living? So it was more, I was sort of drawn to that, and you're touching on things like, okay, we get this algae that's just waste to us, but other people view this as something they need. You know, those kinds of issues, the non, I mean, operations is one thing, how do we get the right amount of water, and how do we make sure we don't run out of water? Is it going to be better to use our neighboring communities for overflow supply rather than, now, there's money associated with that, I'm sure, too, because things aren't designed to work that way right now. But there's this whole other area that we've been struggling with. You know, are we doing this right? If we're not going to privatize it completely, which I intuitively agree with, if we were to do that, how would those guys who we were to have sold to, if you will, how would they run it as a business? And I think that we've, we haven't, I mean, we've done the best we could as a group with the knowledge and experience we have, which is pretty substantial, but this is a business like any other that some people are in and are experts at, and there's been a lot of research and academic work and other things I'm not sure we're really availing ourselves of. So that was, and again, you started to touch on it with some of the thoughts you were having. You know, a McKinsey kind of approach to this thing as opposed to, because this is a huge revenue source for us. It may be potentially much bigger than we think it is, and it's a huge cost for us.
Just a follow on to that as well, and we've talked a little bit about this. We are situated on Lake Michigan, very simplistically. We have neighbors to the north and south. We all have demands for water. We have neighbors to the west. When you think about this as a strategic asset, you have to think about it in the context of collaboration and connection. And yes, there are costs to that, costs that we certainly don't want to pursue without doing the right homework and having the right rationale for that. But when you think about it strategically, and you step away from Lake Forest, and you think about this fantastic asset we have, which is a freshwater, a body of fresh water that is fantastic, and it's, on the face of the earth, it's a real asset, how can we think about that and think about what we're trying to accomplish sustainably and make that a better use, not just to ourselves, but to others around us? And I think we have the chance to at least set the stage for that in the long term, and I think we should. I think it's part of what we are here to do in our community and as citizens, I guess, I would say, citizens of the world, if you want to think that broadly. But I think we have a real opportunity here, and I think we can set the stage for that.
So I think the feeling of the Public Works Committee, and correct me if I'm wrong, was that we move forward with this design procurement, because it does not in any way prevent us or prohibit us from following up on some of these other thoughts and ideas that we have. And this is, we've really just sort of recently become, started talking about this and exploring it. So we're not shutting the door, certainly, on anything that you mentioned, George, and Michelle's ideas, but by the same token, we do have a timeline, we do have membranes that will need to be replaced by us, by someone else, you know, unless we want to shut the doors on that plant and just walk away, and I think we're all in agreement that that's not something that we want to do either. We do need to still keep this moving forward. So our recommendation is to continue with this, with Phase Two, and to also continue to talk about and discuss other possibilities and other opportunities that might be out there for us. But I think at some point, and in fact, it's my feeling, that at some point, hopefully by the August city council meeting, that we'll be able to get some direction and be able to choose a path that we're going to follow down.
Any other questions? If not, I would ask the council approve a Phase Two Replacement Membrane System Design to Strand Associates in the amount not to exceed $107,500. Additionally, staff is requesting $5,000 contingency for any unforeseen professional service requests to study Alternates Three and Five. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Adelman.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy, very much. Alderman Reisenberg?
Yes, I have some comments, Mr. Mayor. I'm the chairman of the PPL, the Public and Lands Committee, and along with Alderman Tac, I'm the Alderman, am a Alderman for the third ward. And I'd just like to remind everybody of the special plan commission meeting tomorrow. I had the opportunity to review late yesterday, and I reviewed again today, the plans that are on the city website, and there have been some significant changes. The four-story building was eliminated, the amenities building, I believe, was eliminated. My pool was eliminated, along with the squash courts. I will certainly miss both of those. But there's also other significant changes, and many subtle changes. That's why, when I said I read it twice, I caught more changes the second time than I did the first time. So I would encourage everybody to look over the plan. I would also ask people to stay involved. There's a lot of work to be done here yet. The process has to be completed before the Plan Commission, it has to go before the Building Review Board, before it comes back to us. And I've, from being on the Plan Commission and working through the Northwestern Lake Forest Hospital, I know that public involvement always tends to make plans better. So I would encourage everybody to stay involved and to certainly participate, if you can, in that special meeting tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments by the council this evening?
Just a comment that dovetails with something that Alderman Reisenberg just said, and I couldn't help thinking about these processes that we go through here, thinking about Forest Park Beach, which was perhaps the most lengthy and, in various times, very contentious planning There were lots of critics, there were lots of experts who appeared in front of us and a bunch of other meetings, some of whom, you know, their expertise may have been in other areas, but they sure became experts for the night. And just look at the output. There was, the process was painstaking, it was frustrating, it was challenging. Everybody was heard, not everything everybody wanted came to pass. For example, there were a number of people who said, why are we doing this at all? Well, now go look. And, you know, the investment by the city versus the private investment was one quarter, actually, it was one-fifth. Private money paid for 80% of that project. So, and, you know, I hope that all the people that were disappointed by that process and didn't feel like they got what they wanted out of it, I hope they donated a lot of money to the project in the final analysis, and it would be really gratifying to have some of them come forward now and say, okay, now what do you think? Because they were listened to, despite the fact that they didn't feel they were being listened to. The project did change, and it came out better, and it's spectacular now. And I think the Laurel and Western project is going to be exactly the same thing.
Thank you. Anything else? If not, moving on. Next item on the agenda, opportunity for citizens to address the council on non-agenda items. Anyone care to address the council here this evening? If not, we'll move on to item number five, items for omnibus vote consideration. There are three, as we always do. If any member of the council would like to take them individually, they may do so, and if not, we'll ask for a vote at the end, accepting all three. Item number one, approval of the May 18, 2015 city council meeting minutes. Number two, the check register for the period April 25 through May 22, 2015. And number three, consideration and approval of the prevailing wage resolution. Any member of the council which should take those separately? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the omnibus, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Adelman.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy, very much. Next item on the agenda is ordinances. There are no ordinances for the council to consider this evening. Item number seven, new business. Any new business to come before the council? Item number eight, any additional comments or items for council discussion? My only comment would be, again, do not forget, June 14th, two weeks from yesterday, Forest Park begins, I think, at 2:00. The trolleys and shuttles start from the parking lot, I think, at 2:00, and the event actually starts at 3:00, so we'll look forward to seeing everyone there and celebrating not only the park, but our community as well. If there's nothing else, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, we're adjourned. Have a good evening.